Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every single justice for our law.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge, Bender, Stenberg, McDonald, Joyle, Finsland, Herrick, McKenzie, Brown, Nowiki, and Saether. Everyone is present.
Recognize and the panel proceed.
Item four is approval of the October 18th, 2011 regular council meeting minutes.
For the motion in multiple seconds, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing on an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 122 zoning and zoning map to rezone five parcels of land in the vicinity of 1817 North 28th Street from R2 Two Family Residential to C2 Highway Commercial District.
Before I call for a public hearing, Director Cirque would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, counselors. Wanted to, this is kind of awkward, I wanted to talk about a couple of things and show a couple of slides about what Velmeer, AKA CBS, is looking at doing with the property that is now known as the corner of 28th and Tower Avenue. It's actually the north and west corner. Probably about two or so years ago, I was approached by Velmeer. Velmeer is actually the developer of CBS. They're the ones that, and John Landers here from Velmeer to talk a little bit about if he have any questions about structure. Essentially, Velmeer is the company that will buy the land, they will build the project, and then they will own the land and the building and lease to CBS. And John will correct me if I'm wrong. And so they're essentially the folks that will do the project for CBS and have a long-term lease with them. About two years ago, I was approached by Velmeer, looking for a site in Superior to construct a CBS. They looked at, we've talked about numerous sites, but they've more or less kind of settled on this site and get your orientation. This, of course, is the gas station that has been defunct for quite some time. These are two fairly substantial homes along North 28th Street to the rest of that, three more homes to the north of the alley, as well as, for the lack of better word, Rick Rockwood's facility, which includes his office. I think there's a security, kind of a loan place there, as well as a lube place in that location. So essentially, Velmeer, over the last year and a half, has worked with not only the commercial property owners, but also the homeowners in that site to purchase the homes and the commercial businesses. They have affected purchase agreements for all of them, and that's the way they do business. So they have since come forward to the city to ask for a rezone. And if you look in your memo, the portion that we are rezoning, and I just wanted to give you an overview of the project, the portion that we are rezoning essentially is from here over. It's where the homes are. We're rezoning that from R2, which is the duplex, or Two Family, to C2, which is what we call Highway Commercial, which would allow this type of use. So any questions of kind of essentially what they're purchasing and the like and what the project's going to look like? One of the issues that we talked about was, what are we going to do, and I should step back a little bit, what are we going to do with the alley that comes through here? Essentially, we've got an alley that comes down this way and exits on here. It services many of the homes, it services many of the businesses, and essentially, well, it won't serve CBS, but I'll talk a little bit about that later, and plowing and the like. So one of the things that CBS is looking at doing, and actually, we'll be looking at vacating this alley and these portions of alleys at their next meeting, but what they will be doing, and I just zeroed out what they'll be buying, is essentially constructing an alley on a piece of property that they have purchased, where a home is today. They'll be moving that alley, doing some pretty extensive screening, you'll see on the next slide, and constructing that to our standards, which will then allow us to, for garbage in the rear, as well as for plowing and the like, and it also satisfies some of the fire departments concerned about having entrances on two sides and exits and things of that nature. We don't want dead-end alleys, that's not what we do, because we don't want to have to drive something in and back it out again when we're in emergency situations. So just want to show you what the site plan, this is a conceptual site plan of what this facility is going to look like. One of the other concerns that I had when we went through this process was the neighbors along Banks Avenue on here. As you can see, CBS has come up with a good landscaping plan, which will include some pretty extensive tree plantings on this side, as well as screening on this side where that alley will be built. And not so important, but also some screening on the other, on the north side of the building. As you can see, they will have a drive-through, and it will, you know, I kind of operate with like how I do believe like Walgreens does today, go through and going around the building, enclosing their trash enclosure here, essentially locking it, not necessarily locking it, but closing it so that it's enclosed all the time, keeping trash inside. And again, I want to stress the amount of landscaping that they've done. The other thing that they have done, and what we asked them to do is not to exit this facility onto an alley, or onto Banks Avenue into a residential area, and they've also done that. See, they have two entrances, one off of Tower Avenue, which more or less is an existing entrance that exists today, they'll just improve it, and along 28th Street on the south here, they will also be kind of more or less improving an entrance at that location. So all meet criteria that we set out. I think it's a great plan. It sets traffic patterns far enough off the intersections, and we're looking at probably a spring or a late spring construction. Couple of characteristics of the building, a little less than 14,000 square feet, probably about a million construction, another 500,000 for site improvements. There are some challenges with some utilities at this location, there's some sanitary that runs here, there's a pretty good-sized storm that comes off of Tower Avenue that will have to be relocated, as well as some pretty significant fiber investment that Century TEL has had, that I know that John's been kind of tearing his hair out a little bit on. So essentially, there's going to be some relocation, that's why some of that site improvement cost is quite high, just because of utility movement. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and we can go on.
Jason, is there any thought of extending the alley east to Tower Avenue, so you've got a T alley rather than a right turn or left turn when you're in the alley?
You mean just north of the property line?
Yes.
It would actually probably go through that building that's sitting there, Dan? You see where that C2 is?
I understand that, but then you just move the site further?
Actually, increasing accesses onto Tower Avenue is usually a no-no when it comes to the DOT and the like, so I-
You already got a curb cut established.
Yeah, I guess it was something that we never talked about, or really saw a need for, I guess, from our standpoint. And again, another, we're kind of, the goal is to kind of eliminate some of those access points, and that's kind of what we wanted to do here.
Okay, no problem with the fire department?
Nope, actually ran this by Chief Rigstad, and he is perfectly fine with it through our vacation process and the like, so.
So no plowing?
Nope, it's kind of going to have the similar shape that we have today, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Thank you, Jason. At this time, I'll call for a public hearing. Would you read the?
A public hearing for an ordinance amending the City Code Chapter 122 zoning and zoning map to rezone five parcels of land in the vicinity of 1817 North 28th Street from R2 Two Family Residential to C2 Highway Commercial District.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing, and those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the third time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing and seeing none. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. And for the third time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the public to adjourn to a close, and ask the pleasure.
Motion to approve second.
For the motion in multiple seconds to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.2 is a public hearing for a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $2,655,000 in general obligation promissory note, Series 2011D, of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, establishing the terms and conditions directing their execution and delivery, creating a debt service account, and awarding the sale of.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing. Those that wish to speak, I'm sorry. Director Dan.
We had, just to fill in the council, and each of you should have a copy of it, we did have 10 bids received for our debt issue. The low bidder was out of Madison, Wisconsin, Bankers' Bank, and it's coming in at just under 1.95% for 10 years. So again, a lot of confidence, a lot of interest in our bondings.
It's really interesting, this is the third one that we've issued that is, all of them have been under 2%, which is phenomenal. A call for a public hearing, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the third time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing and seeing none. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the public to adjourn to a close and ask the pleasure.
Motion to approve second.
For the motion in multiple seconds, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item six is the consent agenda. Several counselors have asked to pull item 6.4, item number three.
I have one to pull, too, dear. Which one? I need to pull 6.53, just for common.
Okay.
There's a motion and I think a second to approve the remaining part of the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Counselor Bender.
I'm going to read that first. Item 6.4, item three, is the Finance Committee, October 13th, recommendation to approve the rate reduction for industrial sewage user charge. We put out at your desk tonight a handout from Diane Nelson from ESD that went to the Finance Committee. There was just a small error in the minutes from the Finance Committee, they didn't include the recommended rate in their minutes, nor their effective date, and this does need an ordinance change, so it's going to have to come back at the next meeting.
Motion to refer back.
For the motion, a second for referral, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Counselor Stenberg.
Item 6.5, number three, is the Human Resources Committee of October 17th, recommendation to approve the suggestion box program.
Counselor.
This is more to bring it to the attention, we've had people coming up and talking about, what do we do with the magic trailer cart, what do we do with this? Well, we finally got a venue for you to submit those ideas, we've got a suggestion program. And they can be reached, there's a link on our website, otherwise it's at suggestions@ci.superior.wi.us. And glad as you put your name on it and you'll get them back, we're just going to take them in and vet them to the different departments. Can't hurt.
We want to thank the counselor for introducing this very valuable idea for public input, as well as employee input for suggestions to improve services and save taxpayers dollars. Thank you.
We need a motion to approve that.
We need a motion to approve that particular one. For the motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried.
Item seven is Business by Department Head, 7.1, the Superior Tree Board is requesting to make a brief presentation to the council regarding the Emerald Ash Borer and the city's readiness plan.
Director Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council, and mayors, I'm sorry, members of the public, mayors of the public, they can all be mayor. I will say once again that we are very fortunate in this community that have citizens who step forward and agree to volunteer on all of our city committees. This evening, I would invite you to acknowledge Gary Foy with the Superior Tree Board, he is the chair, and Mary Kehoe is the vice chair of the Tree Board, Vivian Markley is hearing the audience, too, she's a member of the Tree Board, and of course, Counselor Stensberg sits on the Tree Board, as did Counselor Herrick before her. And so, the reason the group would like to have a moment of your attention this evening is that last summer, the Department of Natural Resources, or the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection placed in the range of 6,000 to 7,000 Emerald Ash Borer traps, purple, triangular, in the woods throughout the top third of the state. And at this point, the people in charge of it are taking a look at what might be in those traps, and frankly, I'm a little nervous. So we thought it would be a good time to come back to you and refresh your memory about the matter of this pest that could one day wind up in our community. And with that, I would invite Tree Board Chair, Vice Chair, I should say, Mary Kehoe, who is going to share some information with you.
Okay, we'll see if I can get through this, I'm not used to talking in public, I sit at home, at my home office all day, and most of my communication is email and text messages, so we'll see if I still know how to talk. So up on the screen, we have the picture of the Emerald Ash Borer, greatly enlarged, he's not quite this big, and if I click, okay. So to discuss the pest, this is the history and scope of the Emerald Ash Borer. It was determined that it arrived here from China, and it came in wood packaging material or wood pallets possibly. It was discovered near Detroit in June of '02. Currently, it's been found in 15 states and two Canadian provinces, which are listed up on the screen. It was located in southern Wisconsin, so it entered our state in 2008. Currently, EAB is as close as the UP of Michigan and St. Paul, Minnesota, so it is zooming in on our area, so that makes us nervous. Here we have a map showing where the pest came from, this is the native range of the Emerald Ash Borer. The circular area is possibly where it came from. And again, this is another view of the Emerald Ash Borer, Agrilis planipennis fermari. And again, this is greatly enlarged, it's a metallic green bug. We see on the bottom left, the larval form, and it has the 1-centimeter mark kind of showing you that it's maybe about 2 to 3 centimeters long total. And then on the bottom right shows the top in bottom view of the pest. And now we can see the actual size of the EAB as compared to a penny, and Mary will pass around some little samples in vials for you to look at. And I believe one is the beetle and another is the larva. So how does the Emerald Ash Borer reproduce, and when and how does it get into our ash trees? The beetle can develop from an egg into an adult in as little as one year. So this first picture is where the pest would be from May through August. The adults are going to emerge from overwintering sites, which are underneath the bark, and they come out in May. Secondly, we're moving into the summer months, June through September. The females will lay eggs in the bark crevices, and the eggs will hatch about 10 days after they are laid. Click, okay. Now we're moving from June to October, so we're getting into the early fall, and we'll see that the larvae have developed. They've, they're making tunnels underneath the bark, they're like S-shaped tunnels, so they feed and grow throughout the fall, and this activity of tunneling underneath the bark is actually what ultimately kills the tree. And then from November through late May, these larvae lay dormant during the winter, and then in spring, in May, they'll emerge as adults from the tree, and we see where they exit, there'll be like a little D-shaped exit hole through the bark where they come out. So that's kind of a summary of the life cycle for your information. Okay, which trees are at risk? Since it's called the Emerald Ash Borer, this insect gears in on the ash trees. So it will attack every ash that we have. The varieties are listed, there's green, white, black, blue, red, and pumpkin ash. So all horticultural varieties of ash trees are susceptible to this pest. And the mountain ash, however, is not really a true ash, so the Emerald Ash Borer will not attack our mountain ash. So what is the impact of these little pests? Right here, we're seeing the larvae feeding underneath the bark, and I don't know, are we going to pass out a sample of that or not? Oh, so it's, okay, okay. So anyway, the larvae that you see in the little vials are feeding underneath the bark of the tree, so they're destroying the vascular tissue of the tree, so they can no longer get nutrients up to the top. So it's disrupting the flow of the water and nutrients to the tree. And the bad thing about the Emerald Ash Borer is that it attacks sick trees and healthy trees. So it, you know, most pests kind of gear in on trees that are not real vigorous and are kind of sickly, but the Emerald Ash Borer goes after any ash tree, healthy or sick of any size, so that's kind of a bummer. How does the Emerald Ash Borer spread from location to location, tree to tree? Once they hatch and the adults come out, they can fly. The normal EAB bug will fly about a half mile, and there are some that can fly up to five miles, they're like super flyers, as Mary calls them. They're also transported in firewood, and nursery stock, and ash products, so anything, you know, anything wood, living, and even the dead, you know, firewood, they can be transported in. I think if any of you have traveled the state of Wisconsin, you've probably noticed some of the billboards about, don't bring firewood, don't transport firewood and everything, so that's really a very important point with this EAB, to purchase your firewood at the campsite you're staying at, and there's really a lot of, you know, importance to that, so that we don't spread by bringing firewood from areas that are possibly infected. Okay, oh, I think I could have been clicking all along, okay. So first was probably the adult in flight, second shows us our firewood, here's the nursery stock, and then we have some wood ash products, so I guess I could have been clicking while I was talking. Okay, how can we tell if an ash tree has the Emerald Ash Borer disease? These are some of the signs of EAB. The canopy of the tree, the top of the tree starts to die back. There are epikormic shoots, also called suckers, which are little growths that come from the very base of the tree at the ground level and kind of shoot out there, so the tree is trying to get extra energy any way that it can, and pull, you know, moisture and nutrients into the tree by producing these shoots. We will see woodpecker activity, because the woodpeckers are going to be going after these beetles. The bark on the tree splits, we see the S-shaped larval galleries underneath the bark, and I think you saw that on the piece of bark that was passed around, you could see the little S-shaped tunnels, and on the outside, those D-shaped exit holes. So this was the first point of the symptoms of EAB. We see crown yellowing and dieback. So the first year, we see a perfectly healthy tree with no thinning, then the second year shows moderate thinning and chlorosis, which the leaves you can see are kind of yellow, so the tree has lost its ability to produce chlorophyll, so it's kind of, you know, not healthy-looking at all, less full and less green. And then the third to fourth year, there's a large thinning followed by tree death. So typically, it will take three to four years from the start of being infested with the bug to the death of the tree. And here's an example of the epikormic branching that I mentioned, you can see by the red arrow, all the shoots coming up from the base of the tree. Woodpecker damage, there we have our little woodpecker pecking away at the bugs. And here we have examples of the S-shaped larval galleries and the cracking of the bark. So what happens, the S-shaped galleries underneath, in response to those, the tree will produce, where the red circle is here, these calluses on the tree, and eventually it will crack open the bark, so this is kind of a sequence of events that happens after the EAB infestation. A picture of the D-shaped exit holes, where the pest leaves the tree. The shape of the bug is kind of like, the bottom is flat and the top of the head is rounded, so that the D shape is sort of the shape of the insect's body as it exits the tree, which is why they're shaped like that. And they're very tiny, they're like an eighth inch across, and I believe the piece of wood Mary just handed out will have an example of these S-shaped exit holes, or D-shaped exit holes, excuse me. Here we see three trees in various states of decline, so these are all ash trees, we have the healthy ash tree with a nice full canopy, then, did I do something? Okay, then we have one that is beginning to become ill, we see the thinning of the crown, and then finally, we have a dead tree. So seeing this, if you picture some of our city streets that have ash lining them, you can see it's going to be a dramatic difference when they die, and once they get the EAB virus, or the EAB pest, excuse me, they do die, there's not, you know, they've been testing a small wasp as a natural predator to the EAB, but I don't think they've had much success with it, so. More pictures from the University of Wisconsin Extension, showing some trees in decline. Over here, we see the dieback of the crown, they're not very full leaves, and both of these pictures, they're looking rather scant with their leaves. So this is showing a large old tree and a newer tree, because EAB will affect both of them. Okay, this is kind of a scary map. All the red dots are spots where the EAB has been discovered. So this includes the 15 states and up in Canada, so you can see, you know, there have been many, many locations where the EAB has been discovered. Surrounded in the blue are the quarantined areas, so you can see, once EAB is discovered within a county, the county is quarantined, so this is basically how close it is to us, it's coming very near. What's at stake should the EAB pest arrive? Right now, it's estimated 2% of the country's total leaf cover are ash trees. Looking at the state of Wisconsin, we have over 700 million ash trees. Looking at the state of Wisconsin, we have over 700 million ash trees. So losing these ash trees is really going to have a big impact on the ecosystem. There's going to be a decreased diversity of trees in our forests. There's going to be gaps in the forest canopy, loss of habitat for animals. And I mean, all, we're going to lose all the things that these trees do. They, you know, pull up groundwater, they filter groundwater, they, you know, keep our homes cool by filtering the sun. They, you know, there's a lot of really important things that trees do for us, and we are going to lose that if we lose our ash trees. Superior has about 3,078 ash trees in our streets and parks, and this does not include the private property ash trees and the municipal forests. So we have a fair number of ash trees at stake if and when this, this pest arrives. These are the areas in Wisconsin that are currently quarantined, marked in red. And the quarantine is going to affect nurseries, mills and loggers, firewood producers and users, green lumber manufacturers, pellet producers, wood waste. So we see that the quarantine basically will not let ash or any type of hardwood, firewood out or in to the quarantine area. We've been working pretty heavily on our EAB readiness plan because, as you can see, this is going to be a, a pretty dramatic thing to deal with if and when again it arrives. What we're working on, we've agreed our Tree Board to serve as the EAB readiness team. So we've been trying to learn more about EAB and inform key people, which is why we're here today. I think since the last time we presented about EAB, there have been some changes, so we wanted to refresh your memory and, and let you know about new developments such as how close the, the pest has come. Tree Board members and parks and rec staff have all had training in this area. And presentations are made to the Common Council and County Board and other community organizations because we want to get as many people informed about this as we can. Okay, so why do we think this is so important? Well, we did a tree survey of the city in 2009 and identified those 3,078 ash trees. And so that number in the past two years may vary somewhat, but again, you have a general idea of the, the number of ash we have in the community. Most of them are good size. Most of them are 10 to 12 inches in diameter. So in 2007, the cost of replacing a 12-inch tree, removal is about $340. Replanting that tree, about $400. So if you multiply that by the 378 trees, we come up with over $2 million. And, you know, that price probably has gone up since 2007. So we're talking a huge sum of money should this have to happen. Even if we just remove the trees, once they die and not replant them, I, I would think that's still over a million dollars. So we're talking like a huge sum of money. Another thing that we're working on that we thought was really very exciting is, um, once Emerald Ash Borer would, would hit the area, we have to, you know, at first they said we had to take down all the trees. Now they're not saying that anymore, but, but trees will have to be removed for the safety of the public and ones that could possibly fall in the road and, and whatnot once they die. So in planning ahead, the city has purchased a chipper last year that chips to the one-by-one by one-inch size that's required to say that that piece of wood is treated and can no longer support the Emerald Ash Borer. And Mary's passing around woodchips that are that size. Most chipper's do not chip that small, so if the pieces are, are larger than that, the Emerald Ash Borer could still survive and you could not transport those chips anywhere because they would still be infested or contaminated. In addition to helping us plan for the possible arrival of EAB, this wood chipper has also improved the efficiency of the public works. It's easier for them now. They can chip right on site and they don't have to move a log to a staging area, a dead tree, and, and move it twice. So this has saved considerably on their time right now. And then the last point, um, what we're currently doing with our woodchips is transporting them to New Page in West Duluth. So this was, was a really exciting development that, that we're able to do this. So in the future, if we do have to get rid of our chips and we have, you know, a large amount of them due to the death of the trees from Emerald Ash Borer, we do have a place to take them. Although, we have to probably plan, um, also for additional staging sites because if a lot of trees would have to be taken down at one time, we probably couldn't transport as quickly as, as they could handle our woodchips. So right now, we're looking at staging sites in addition, um, looking at nearby county property, considering our existing tree dump on Albany Avenue, and also at the landfill or somewhere near it so that we would have an additional spot to stage our woodchips before transporting them over to New Page. An important thing with EAB, I think, is public awareness. We have to get the community and all of you elected officials to know about EAB and know what a great threat it is to us economically and, and everything. Tree Board's been giving presentations like the one tonight. We have done two door hanger events where, um, the first one in 2009, we, we did it with a grade school, and then all the kids went out and hung the little, I think you each have one of the door hangers. So we delivered them to 2,500 homes in the neighborhood, hanging them on doors. And then the Boy Scouts also did that this spring in Billings Park. So we have, two of the, um, most heavily ash-populated neighborhoods in town have, have gotten these door hangers. So that, those were some of the ways that we're trying to create public awareness on this issue. For any of you that would like more information in more detail, we have some websites up here and you could pass them along to any of the citizens in your districts that, that might be interested in more information. So the first two are just for general info, and the last one has the whole state of Wisconsin's EAB response plan, if you want to take a look at that. I'll leave, I don't know if anyone wants to write that down or otherwise. Okay, now it's going back. That must be my last slide. Okay, all right. Okay, I don't know why it started going backwards. Well, anyway, it's, okay. Oh, there we go. Okay, so that's the end of our presentation, and if anyone has any questions, feel free, I will try to answer. And I'm sure Mary would probably be better at answering some of the more technical questions you might have. Thank you for your time and listening to this important issue.
Thank you. Counselor Stender.
Yeah, I have a question. I know that, that trees on private property are, we're very concerned with.
Uh huh.
Excuse me, can citizens come in and bring their trees to the staging area, to the chipper?
That is a great question, Counselor. At some point, it is likely that I will be coming to you and the mayor and asking you for permission for private trees to be staged at a city site. What we have learned at training is that for every public tree, there could be as many as three or four private trees. That puts our 3,000 at 12,000. And so I believe that it is probably the right thing for the municipality to provide a site and maybe even some disposal for homeowners who have an ash, just so that that ash doesn't, uh, move anywhere else. So I, at some point, you'll probably be invited to make that decision more formally because there will be a cost associated with, not necessarily the staging, but the disposal.
That was a great presentation. Thanks a lot. There's, you know, there's a couple of things about that, and we've been talking about this for, I don't know, three or four years at least in, in park recreation. In the presentations and all of the materials that I've seen up until now, you don't really get a good idea of the size of these things or the size of their exit holes until you see that piece of tree there. I think somebody who's looking at a tree and looking for a D-shaped exit hole in an ash tree is not likely to see something that small. And I don't know, not that I know how you'd convey that in printed material, but that was, you know, a good thing to see, to, to know how small of a hole you actually have to look for. And then, you know, something I've been trying to get somebody to tell me for, as long as we've been talking about this, is why transporting firewood is an issue, but all the log trucks that are out there around isn't an issue. I just, I've yet to have anybody make sense of that for me, if you.
In fact, I, I think they are likely to both be an issue in any quarantined area, Counselor. The, the mills and the commercial loggers and such are slated to be contacted by the state as well in any quar, once an area is quarantined.
Sure, makes sense, but I think that, that the regulations regarding firewood, uh, moving firewood, I think it's, what, 25 miles our statewide now? I think, aren't they?
I'm unsure that.
I think they are, yeah.
Counselor Bender.
Yes, I have a number of questions. Now, since they've had a, a history of the Emerald Ash Borer in Asia, are there no natural predators besides woodpeckers? Nothing that would, that could stop the advance of the Emerald Ash Borer in its tracks?
Um, the, people in Minnesota are experimenting with a wasp that Mary mentioned earlier, but we don't have the results of that experimentation yet. And to my knowledge, there aren't many natural predators for the pest.
Okay, Owen, I wanted to thank both of you for the presentation. I have two more quick questions. Is there any way that this info could go on the city's website, maybe even a PowerPoint presentation or, or something like it?
It, it could. We think it's best to guide people to the state's website where there is even more information, for example, how homeowners might approach the matter, and so on and so forth.
Maybe that link could be on the website.
Well, yeah, that's a good idea. In fact, it might be. I'm, I'm not sure that it's not, but it's a great idea anyway. Thank you.
Well, and then here's the last one. And the last one is looking at the bag of, um, chips that came around. And Tom had to break one because it wasn't one by one, but that's neither him or there. But we, we see, um, ads for pellet stoves. Now, these, these would, um, once the chips are that size, they're no longer dangerous far as transporting Emerald Ash Borer?
Um, yes, that's my understanding.
Well, just a thought was, maybe it would be possible when the chips are that size to make some sort of packaging of them and sell them or give them away just to get rid of, get rid of them and reclaim the space as far as using them for pellet stoves? If they would be compatible, they look like they're about the same size.
Yeah, I can't tell if they would be an acceptable or appropriate material for pellet stones. When we bring them to New Page, they in turn take them to Minnesota Powers Biofuel Operation, which by the way, one of our Tree Board members suggested as a solution, Mr. Foy behind me here. In fact, they are compensated for that. We are not, but we don't have the proper equipment to connect with the biofuel operation. What happens for us, though, is we're not putting them in a landfill. We're not using our space. Mm-hmm. So they are burned, Counselor.
Great.
In a two-step process.
Great, well, thank you for those answers. Thanks again, both Marys, for the presentation.
Mary, Jeff Foster has a, a pellet-making machine down at his site down on Commerce Point. So you could ask Jeff if, uh, that would be adequate material.
That would be another worthy discussion, Counselor.
President Olson.
I guess you commented on it, Mary, too. They burn those woodchips over at Hibbard. So, uh, the only other question I had is, how often is the tree dump on Albany Avenue I mean, we've got the area on Albany, the west side of Albany, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it's open for our own operations, Counselor, but I don't know that it is open to the public at all. In fact, was that, was that your question?
I don't believe, well, yeah, but, you know, when you drive by, there is brush and trees there all the time, and, uh...
That's municipal waste.
Right. But there's trees there and all. Was there any thought of checking with Chemist? They have a mulcher. They've got everything out there on their property, just salt to Central Avenue, which is still in the city, for a collection point.
We haven't to date, but you never know if we have 12,000 trees that we have to treat. We might be exploring all kinds of options with all kinds of vendors.
Might be a real good spot to look, very, you know, within the city limits and close for.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, um, excuse me if I, if I missed this during your presentation, but I was just curious, um, they're not here now, but when would be, could we possibly expect them to show up in this area?
Don't have a clue. They're not here now, though, and in fact, neither, neither the city forester or the city arborist really have the credentials and expertise to identify when an infestation has arrived. We'd be sending a sample of larvae or the bug, Counselor, to a lab in Madison, Wisconsin, where it can be properly identified. And the other thing is, all of those signs and symptoms you saw this evening also impact all sorts of other trees that are experiencing all sorts of other pests. So, um, I don't know what to tell you. All I can tell you is that in '07, when we began to become startled about this, there were like, uh, five states. And now, just a few years later, there are 15 states where this bug has appeared. There's been some theoretical discussion that perhaps our climate has spared us to date, but, you know, the U.P. and St. Paul are not very far away.
Yeah, well, I know this is a, a big issue throughout the whole United States with devastating results, and, uh, I would certainly hate to see us to lose all these, all these trees in, in Superior. And so, uh, I really appreciate what you've, what you've done as, as a group to educate everybody and to do what we can to, to, to take care of it when this time comes when we, when they do show up here, so.
Well, for those of you who remember the Dutch elm crisis, the Tree Board really thought it was best that we start sending this message to the public and to yourselves about what to expect. It's not good news, but we think it's responsible that the facts are shared.
Vice President Herrick.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, thank the Tree Board for, for what they do, for, you know, this is a problem and it's going to be an expensive problem, so it's good that, you know, they're educating, not only us but also the public, so I want to thank them for all their hard work. So thank you.
I just have a comment and one question. Many of us recall, I think it was around the 1980s, '78 to '80, when we had the Dutch elm disease in the city, and those of us that are old enough to remember also remember that most of our city streets were canopied with those beautiful trees, and of course, they're gone, and many of that, much of that canopy in our community is gone also. And we had, there was nothing we could do about it but watch it back then, watch it deteriorate and, and eliminate them. But the question is, um, is there any research going on, uh, outside of a wasp, a preventative spray or some kind of, um, something like that that we could use as a preventative measure?
In fact, there is a ton of research taking place right now, being conducted about pesticides that might be used on various trees. To date, to my knowledge, all they do is slow the dying of the tree. They will not save the tree. And so that is unhappy news until the scientific community does come upon the right concoction combination of things. But to date, Mayor, we know of no remedy that will save the tree. Those remedies will slow the dying of the tree, and some communities, like the city of Milwaukee, have spent a lot of money treating their trees simply so that they will die slower because they know they can't adequately address taking them all down at once. Bigger cities with many, many, you know, they have 36,000 ash in Milwaukee. I think they treated 16,000 of them with the hope that the death of those trees would be slower.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Uh, we thank you very much for the presentation, also for the very hard work that you have dedicated yourselves to as far as watching after our parks and our trees in this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to the Council too and the citizens. We really appreciate your thoughtful remarks about the approach the city is taking, and I'm sure the Tree Board will have some discussion. I'm sure the Tree Board will have some discussions about some of your remarks at their next meeting.
Thank you again.
Okay. Item 7.2, Planning Director CERC is recommending the city donate 21, 22 through 24 Ogden Avenue to Western Lake Superior Habitat for Humanity for the purpose of rehabilitating a home for a low to moderate income household.
You've heard the motion in second, discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Bender.
I just wanted to thank Planning Director CERC for this. This happens to be in the 3rd district, and this was, I believe, a fourplex, the old building that was torn down. And I know I've gotten a call every summer since the teardown about all of the weeds that are growing there, and the neighbors would like the weeds cut. And it costs a lot of money to do that, and we can only do it a couple times a year, but this is a very good use of that lot. And I know other neighbors have commented to me about this, very much in favor of this is a good use of the lot, and we're very happy that this is happening.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, I think Warren said it, said my thoughts too. I think it is a great use of that property and Habitat for Humanity and great efforts there, Jason, so keep it up.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 7.3, Planning Director CERC is recommending to transfer a 60-foot strip of city-owned property to Lakehead Chemist, Inc.
You've heard the motion in second, discussion? Vice President Herrick.
Yeah, Jason, just a quick question on that. So what I understand from the memo that you sent us is that this property was actually sold to Chemist, but the paperwork was another transfer, Jim, is that correct?
That is the correct. I did quite a bit of research on this, and yeah, unfortunately, and as I mentioned, just for the kind of the public, when we were doing some arrowhead peer work, some survey work, we find this, we found this abnormality in the plat. And yes, this property was, the intention was to sell it, it was sold, and through some, when it was described and the like, we left out that 60-foot strip. So now Mr. Libgard has to actually go back and replats. We'll be bringing that to you at some point in the future, but we needed to start this with this first step.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
Jason, how was that going to affect then the property owners there then? Are they going to gain property or?
Not necessarily. Well, they're going to gain property on paper. They actually are on property essentially, and you know, instead of throwing up and causing a panic, they actually are on city-owned property right now. And this will clear the title. They'll essentially get an amended deed. They won't lose any property, they won't gain any property, nothing will change, it'll just be on paper.
Who surveys that and who's responsible for the survey?
The gentleman's name that actually, there were two gentlemen that did it. The guy that is doing it right now is a correction, his name is Norman Libgard, Libgard Surveying. He's done it for many, many years. Yep.
Good, thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.4, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to purchase a Kravco Magnum Spray Patch Machine from Brockwhite for $48,797.64.
motion approved. Further motion, second discussion, Counselor Bunch.
Well, I'm trying to understand, there's two pieces that go together here, is that what I'm looking at that we need? What's with the demo unit? You got a 215-hour demo unit that saves a...
There's a, the Minnesota State bid price for a new machine is 66,300. They, they, they have a demo unit available with 215 hours on it. We can save 17 grand by buying the slightly used unit with all the bells and whistles on it already. Because a demo unit, they put everything on, they want to show it off. So we can actually save a, you know, significant chunk of money by buying the used, the demo unit rather than buying the brand-new unit.
So we're going to have two of these?
No, the other one will go away.
Okay. I was just curious, also, last year, we did a lot of chip sealing in cracks, and come springtime, that stuff pops out of the cracks like it was meant to. And so, you know, I got a question, how smart I really think this is.
It's just like pop-up patching, I mean, it's going to get to buy temporarily. We do have a, you know, for that area, we do have a project slated for next year that would be a partial-depth concrete repair. That'll be the more permanent fix for that. But a lot of the maintenance that we do is a stopgap until we can do something better. You know, if money grew on trees, we could do a lot of things.
Counselor McKenzie.
Is this, is this system, is it used on concrete and blacktop?
Yeah, we use it on East Second Tower, Belmont.
And it's that similar where it's, we're just spraying into these cracks and?
Right, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an emulsified asphalt with a 3/8-inch aggregate. And there's a compressor behind it, so you're spraying in the rocket. I don't recall the speed, 80 miles an hour, when it's cranked up all the way. So you actually get the compaction without having to run a tamper over it. And it's a cleaner and easier. We can produce it ourselves, we don't have to wait for an asphalt plant to be open. It's a better patch than a cold mix. We've got a 2,000-gallon heated tank down at the shop for holding our emulsion, and there's a heated tank on this unit, 200 or 250 gallons, so it's, that's the system.
Yeah, and I know what Tom is talking about because I believe that we had, was it Todd? Somebody at Kendrick Park and Rec. Mary, do you remember, they come, we talked about the trails and utilizing that same system? And he works for the Minnesota, you know, Department of Transportation and said that it was not effective.
That's a different system. That was a belt and seal, a rubberized cracks, rubberized cracks, so there were, we route out the cracks.
Oh, that's completely different.
Completely different.
Oh, okay, okay. So you think this system works then?
As a stopgap, yes. And it's probably one of the more efficient patching methods that we have.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I have a question. Will this equipment, can it be utilized below freezing if we want to do patching during the winter months?
Usually not, usually with rising temperatures in the spring, that type of thing. One of the biggest problems is the manufacturer of the oil. They basically shut down this time of year and start up in about April. So we'll have a month, month and a half in the spring of emulsified asphalt before we have hot mixed asphalt from the plants.
That's great. As you know, we're all big proponents of patching. And, thank you very much. You have a motion in the second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.5, Director Getzmann is requesting to purchase a 2012 Elgin Pelican NS Street Sweeper from McQueen Equipment for $140,713.50.
What is the pleasure? You've heard the motion in second, discussion? Vice President Herrick.
Yeah, just a question, since the, we have two of them, that's correct, is that correct? Two sweepers and we're purchasing one? Okay, and there's one that's a 2005, I mean, what's the average life on these? I mean, you know, I've been seeing that, since when are you basically through the summer?
Six to seven years.
Six to seven years?
Yeah, you take something that's all metal and you run sand through it eight hours a day, they don't last long. And they would, something like this trading units go to maybe a contractor where they're using them sporadically. But for something that we, we, you guys are screaming when we don't have the sweepers out, so if they're down, they're broke down, parts are expensive, they take a long time to get. And so we're on about a seven-year cycle with these machines because they're real expensive. This one is going to need, or the old one, if we were to keep it, is going to need 20 to $25,000 worth of parts, labor, just to get it back to where it's in okay shape to replace a lot of the worn parts.
Okay, how old's the other one?
2005.
The one's 2005.
2005, the other one is, yeah, '08, I think.
'08, okay, thank you.
President Olson.
What are we doing with the old one? Got a buyer for it?
We're trading this one in.
Trading it in?
Yeah, we'd be trading it in for about $35,000 trade value on the new one.
So you can have a machine that would work okay for $60,000, but we think it's necessary to buy one for 140?
Yeah, it's got $6,000 on it. I mean, it'll go a while at 60,000 bucks, yeah. It's unknown, I guess, you know, you're running rock and sand and all those moving parts all the time.
Are there any used, used one of these and any other places that maybe just don't use them, find, buy a machine and realize they don't, they don't need them?
Don't want to answer that.
Just have a hard time. You know, I brought this up a couple other times where we're trading in front-end loaders with low hours on them. And when we've got a, the city department that works on these things, and I understand all the gears and all the mechanisms and all that and the wear and tear on them, but it just seems like a lot of money.
I'm looking for the $60,000, are you, are you aware of one for sale for 60,000?
No, it's just that if, if you're getting $35,000 trade-in, if it's worth $35,000 and if you can repair it for 25, you're looking at $60,000 instead of an additional 80 for a new one.
I hear you.
And if you got three, four more years out of, are you getting 50% more out of a used piece of machinery if it's properly kept up?
Yeah, I think it's hard to predict. I guess, I don't know how long you get out of an additional life, you know, after you put 25,000 in it. You know, it's not, it's still not the engine and the drivetrain on the thing. I think that's just the mechanism for picking it up and dumping it and actual the vacuum sweeping portion of it. So there's still other parts that you'd have to, you know, maintain and potentially replace down the line. We could certainly take a look if that's the wish of the council, you know, what, what used units go for or what's available.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, Todd, I don't usually scream too much, do I?
Only when it's springtime.
Yeah, I guess I have kind of a, I've got a problem too with 140,000 or 141,000. Like Mike said, a piece of machinery that's used, you know, primarily in the summer. Like Dan Olson said, you know, we do have good mechanics. I do have a question about how, how would it affect the price on this now with the Minnesota bid process? This is a Minnesota bid thing too, isn't it?
Right, Minnesota State Bid, that has already gone through the bid process, and that's the, that's the lowest manufacturer, manufacturer price. So it's already gone, gone through all of the low bidders, the manufacturers, putting in their best price to the state of Minnesota for that sweeper.
So what, at the end, at the end of the day, how much is this going to cost? How much would this piece of machinery cost the city?
140,000.
It would be $140,000 after everything's said and done, trade-in and?
Right.
Well, I don't know, I think I'd like to make a motion to, what, go to Public Works, or where can we discuss this? I said I'd like to make a motion to have this go to a committee for further discussion?
Refer.
Refer it?
Second.
Public Works then.
Further motion, second for referral. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I just have one question on the same topic, if I may. Last spring, when I arrived here, I asked why there weren't two sweepers out, and the answer was one was broken down. Is this the one that was broken down?
This is the one they were rebuilt, doing a partial rebuild on last spring, just the season, going through the season. You know, it got worn out, the bushings and belts and?
Okay, thank you.
Item 7.6, Director Getzmann is requesting to purchase a 2012 Dodge Grand Caravan for the, both the police and fire departments for a total of $21,083 per vehicle.
Further motion in second, discussion? I have a latent question. What are these vehicles specifically used for?
In the police department, we use them for investigators to drive. We also use them if we have out-of-town training or meetings, those types of activities. They're economical and multiple passengers can ride comfortably in them.
The fire department's going to use this vehicle mostly for out-of-town training and meetings. The vehicle we're currently using has 130,000 miles on it. That vehicle is going to go to our inspector. The inspector vehicle is going to move down into a utility vehicle. The utility vehicle will get rid of his 1994 Suburban that's falling apart.
Thank you very much. Counselor Brown.
Yeah, the county has been renting vehicles for out-of-town travel and things like that. And I'm just wondering if this wouldn't be a better option to rent a vehicle for out-of-town travel, for training and those such things? That way, we don't have to pay insurance, maintenance and all of those other. I don't know if it's an option that we should look at. I think we should look at it to see if there's cost savings there for us.
Any further discussion?
That's probably an okay idea, Bob, but I think with leasing, I think maintenance, you still have, oh, not leasing? Oh, okay, okay.
Further discussion? You have a motion in second, approve. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.7, Director Getzmann is requesting to purchase three 2012 Chevrolet Impala unmarked police sedans for a total of $20,093 per vehicle.
Motion approved. Further motion in second to approve, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.8, Director Getzmann is recommending the contract for installation of a new telephone system at ESD be awarded to Yak's Technology in the amount of $23,550 and the PRI line and associated hardware to CenturyLink for $275.
What is the pleasure? Further motion in second, discussion? Counselor Bender.
Yes, I just had a question on how many bidders were there? Maybe Nancy knows that.
Because this was specialized equipment, they solicited bids directly with three local providers. Of those three, only two provided the actual system that they were interested in. So they conducted a very in-depth interview with each of them and selected this company.
Okay, so this is the lowest responsible bid?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Vice President Herrick.
Yeah, just a question, what are we looking at for the 23,000? I understand the other charge of 275 for updating the system in our respect, but what are we looking at for that 23,000? I mean, we're just, I mean, what are we looking at? Just phones or what are we actually looking at there?
I believe it's all new, like digital phone server, phones and the cabling that's necessary to hook it all up for that whole entire facility. And we've got older technology here, and it's got a high number of users, it also services all of the call-ins for lift stations and all those things that we monitor remotely and control remotely. And we do have 24-hour phone service down there too, that they're trying to get a system that can access from remote locations for calls, for flooding and those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Under item nine, business by counselors, Counselor Olson requested to say something.
Just an information, Thursday at 6:30 at the Spur Middle School, Officer Bonnie Johnson, Counselor Bender and I will be hosting our community involvement get-together at, we'll have coffee and donut holes you're getting. So anyway, I want to invite the public to join us with that. So, anyway, I want to invite the public to join us with that event at the Spirit Middle School Thursday at 6:30. Tip.
Item 11.1, and it is an ordinance introduced by the city clerk relating to the consolidation of 10 polling places to five. I do have an amendment to the ordinance that you have. I don't know if you'd like me to read each district separately, if items, District 6 and District 10 were recommended originally for the Salvation Army, and after getting beat up by Bob Brown several times, we re-looked at the Peter Rich Center and have decided that that actually would be a pretty good location for both the 6th and the 10th districts. So, I'm recommending that change, that amendment to the ordinance.
What's the pleasure?
I'm sorry.
Further motion, second, as to the amendment or to the amended ordinance? Amended ordinance?
Amended ordinance.
Any discussion? I'm sorry.
Motion was just as a, on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor. It was for the amendment.
Motion in the second was just as a relation to the item on the agenda, wasn't it?
Yeah, with, with the, I would assume with the amendment, that's recommended.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, so Terry, the 6th and the 10th, so then that's, it's, there's no Salvation Army anymore?
Yeah, Counselor Brown and I went back to Peter Rich today. I was actually unaware that there's a large room that is separated from the back room where they are right now, and I never knew it existed there. And when we walked through there today, I think it would actually be a really good facility to use, and we're, we don't have to relocate one less district by keeping the 10th there.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, I think that was the biggest concern of all the districts was there, so I think a lot of people would be happy about that, then.
Yeah, I think it'll work well there.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, and I'm at, we were down and looked at it, and I know that a lot of people in the 10th are not in favor of moving, and I'm still not in favor of this, and I'm not speaking for Len. You know, Len has to make his own decision whether he wants the 6th district to move or not. So, that's all I'm saying, is that I'm happy that the 10th is staying where it's at.
Counselor Joel?
Well, since this is the first notification that I've had that we're not going to the Salvation Army, I guess I'd like a little more time to get involved.
Yeah, and that's fine, I'm sorry, I should have contacted you today, that was completely my over, my oversight. When Counselor Brown was in this morning, and we went and looked at it, I know when we had originally spoken, it was that we were looking at either the Salvation Army or the library.
Yeah, I went to the Salvation Army and I?
Yeah, that's my fault, Counselor, I'm sorry about that. If you want to hold this for one more month and go down there and look with me, we could serve?
I would like to hold it for one more month.
Not one month, how about the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Further motion in second to hold, for further consideration? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any business by the public? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We stand adjourned.